Thank you. We'll call, that was loud, wasn't it? I'd like to call to order the August 14th, 2017 Fort Mill Town Council meeting. If everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Huntley?
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here together at the Town Council of Fort Mill, we pray that you would give us wisdom to do what is right. We pray also that you would give wisdom to our national leaders. We give thanks for the many blessings that we have received as individuals, as a town, and as a nation. In these things we pray in our holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. For all those that have come into our audience, I just would let you know that we've just spent two hours looking at information in regards to potential plans for our budget season. We are currently in the throes of trying to get that budget together and determine what good moves can we make for the town of Fort Mill. No vote was taken during that workshop, we simply had discussion. So, thank you all for your attendance. If you have a cell phone, would you please turn it off? At a minimum silence it. Alright, the minutes. We have the minutes for July 17th, 2017 in the packets. Any changes? Any deletions?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Alright, thank you. Public comment pursuant to Section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comments sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed in to speak? We do not. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings for this evening. We'll begin with presentations. Presentation number one, a presentation update on the all-inclusive playground, Brown Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's a great honor to come to you tonight to give you an update from the all-inclusive playground committee that meets on a monthly basis, about once a month, and usually meet at different locations. We've been meeting recently down at Looms here on Academy Street. And just to give you an update also too, there's nine members currently on the committee that is being led by Mrs. Lori Christensen. Y'all know who, very huge passion for this project, so.
Just wanted to. What they've asked me to do, I'm kind of a non-officio member of the committee. I meet with them, I have no voting rights, but they asked me to just come and kind of inform you quarterly of where we are with that project and everything. Just a couple of things that I want to highlight to you. We've got cash committed and land donations as of today. Their goal is $550,000 and they have $101,500 at this time pledged or raised for that project. They did choose a vendor for the project, the inclusive playground. It will be Landscaped Structures, which is a long history of building these type of facilities and playgrounds. Fundraisers, they have in process currently at local restaurants and other businesses, and they also have an online fundraiser with their website. And it is allplaytogether.com, just so you'll, make sure you know that. They have discussions in process currently with Duke Energy, the Carolina Hospital System, Piedmont Medical Center, York Electric founders, and there's also some other vendors also too. They have the following grant opportunities they've received from the York County Community Foundation. They're also finalizing a pledge letter that they want to get out and get on their website. Working on some playground signings for the location that you guys had designated to them, at the Waterside location. Also, the community awareness and support continues to grow for this project. You've probably seen some articles that's been in the local paper, the Fort Mill Times, and also on TV with CN2. They're asking, and they've received from you guys already, it's the support for this project by you donating to excite the 12,000 square feet for the playground. And they're just asking you two if you see any type of fundraisers that are out on the website, or if you see it, like and share a Facebook page, and just help promote the cause, is what they're asking for that too. And their goal is for a community bill in early of 2019, which is only about a year and a half away. So, they're working hard. I encourage you, if any of you have an opportunity to come to the meetings, we will be meeting this Friday at 2:00 PM, right on Academy Street, down at Looms, right across from the Police Department. And that was kind of the report I wanted to give you tonight from the all-play-together inclusive playground project. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if any of you have any, at all.
Very happy to get a report on it, and I know that you're right, this is a passion for Lori, and she has worked tirelessly to try to get this in place. And sometimes these types of fundraisers are very difficult. So, you see a little movement on the front end and you see a lot on the end. It is a worthy project, and this council has been very generous in providing support, and we wish them all the best.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Brown.
I'll be back, give you another report on this in December.
Sure.
Your December meeting.
Presentation number two, Fort Mill Economic Council Wayfinder Signage Project. David Weis, Cody Gibson, Shaw Custer, and I do believe Wink's in the audience as well. So, would you like to give us a presentation on this much-needed item?
How y'all doing tonight?
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, staff and council, mayor. You know me as Shaw Custer, I'm the chairman of the Economic Council. I've been put there by our illustrious co-members for a couple of years, and I've enjoyed it. As you all know, the Fort Mill Economic Council was formed some years ago. This was to help plan and facilitate the economic and physical revitalization of Fort Mill. This is also to promote its preservation of downtown and surrounding areas, and we're starting to see this happen now. Part of our previous work a few years back was to fund a study with the town's support, which was called the Priority Investment District, or Priority Investment Study. This was to create the district in and around downtown, which was considered Node 5 of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan. And this was to enhance it through a series of means which N.R. study called the four Ps. And the four Ps in our study was the FMEC's overall efforts with our mission statement, that was to plan, promote, preserve, and prosper, or enhance, any of our opportunities, any of Fort Mill's opportunities for a vibrant, more prosperous town. Now, within our study, the planning and promoting section of it, it speaks of the branding and signage as one of the integral components of sustaining a town's identity. And within that section, we have pictures of Herndon, of Greer, of Greenville, as some of those opportunities that we've saw. This was back in, I think, 2014, 2015 when we did that study. The program also addressed, and is consistent with the Town of Fort Mill's soon-to-be adopted unified development ordinance, which is why we are here tonight. The FMEC is here to present a wayfinding signage proposal, which is an interpretive branding and signage system that strategically impacts and influences a community's traffic flow to our parks, commerce centers, available parking, and other points of interest. If you would go to your handouts that I think you all have in front of you, we have broken down our wayfinding project into our Economic Council's four Ps, which we always will live by. Now, the first part is the planning, which is to formulate a request for proposals to submit to civil engineering firms with the agreed-upon scope of work to create and implement a wayfinding program based on stakeholders of Fort Mill and the public. And we've already started to draft that and sent that over to you all to start to look into this and see what you're thinking. The second part is promote. To educate and direct the public using the system of strategically-placed directional signage to public points of interest, parking, commerce destinations again. Third part is preserve. The wayfinder study will maintain and improve our commerce districts, and at the same time protect and identify our historic neighborhoods and homes, as well as its commercial structures. And last is prosper. This would facilitate the flow of consumer traffic to points of interest and destinations around Fort Mill. I'd like to thank you all, and I'm going to go ahead and present this, just turn this over to David Beust, who will go into more detail.
Thank you. Hi, David.
We have a short PowerPoint presentation here that I'd like to take you through, if I could. What the best part about what a wayfinder system does, and you can see the bull's-eye graphic at the bottom, and let me kind of explain what that does. We have an I-77 corridor that takes you to this county. We have a very prosperous county, and we have a fantastic town. And if there's any complaint at all about the Town of Fort Mill, is that we're growing really fast, and there's a lot of burden on our roads and our parking requirements. That's exactly what a wayfinder system does. It helps you get from your interstate to your local arterial roads, to your local roads, to parking, and to pedestrian wayfinds, so that you can get to the destination that we want to promote as a town. I think that it's important to point out that it also really helps with air quality. It's a great way to advertise our area. It also helps reinforce our town's identity. Traffic and parking, everybody loves to complain in Fort Mill that we need more parking and we need to reduce traffic, but I think we have an education problem, that we need to present our best foot forward and use our resources to the best of their ability. That's what a wayfinder system does. In your packet, you'll see that some of our growth numbers, and I think we all know them, but job growth of 6% compared to 1.7% national, over 40% growth since 2010 from a population standpoint. It's important that we not only plan for the growth, but we also give the growth that wants to come visit us now, and let them know where to go. So, let's talk about what, how this study would help us with our needs. It helps improve traffic circulation patterns and identify the roads and the parking areas that we want to direct traffic to. It unlocks the potential for the town's tourism and branding, and it provides insight to the community's local scene. You know, we're not the only ones that are thinking about this. The city of Rock Hill, Indian Trail, Gastonia, Pineville, Matthews, Greer, Greenville, and Charlotte have all done programs towards this. I don't want to throw a lot of stats at you, but there's one I really like. When the city of Charlotte implemented their wayfinder system, the average trip from A to B got reduced by a half a mile per trip. Just think how much more efficiently traffic could go through our city if everybody wasn't driving around trying to find parking. Think about the environmental impact of that. Think about the lack of people cutting through neighborhoods trying to get somewhere where they don't need to be going through a neighborhood. That's what a wayfinder system does. It's also, as Sean pointed out, it's also consistent with our UDO. It's one of the requirements that, and it gives us the ability to create a master plan and brand it, so that we can identify the regions that are important to us, and then defend it when it comes time to make sure that we don't have haphazard different schemes in different areas, that we have a plan that's set for the Town of Fort Mill. As an incredible return on investment, I think that this study, as we found in our surrounding communities, makes it a more valuable and rewarding experience for not only the residents, but the tourists and the visitors to our town, while still preserving our local culture. So, what we're asking you for, we have a, kind of a cool little acronym there. It's promoting, approving, and implementing, and defending a wayfinder system. And we're asking the town to support the Fort Mill Economic Council with that. In your packets, you have an RFQ that we've created and have asked town for some comments on, to submit civil engineering firms to give us a study, to study our area, contact our local stakeholders, and find out what the best plan for this town is. So, we're asking for a request for action. The Fort Mill Economic Council is committed to this study. We are asking the Town of Fort Mill for $30,000 to assist the Fort Mill Economic Council in the implementation of this study. We believe that there's grant funding, and we believe this project can be done in phases, but you've got to start with a study. So, thank you for your consideration.
Do you have questions for David? Of course.
So, the $30,000 for the study, is that to determine where we need the signs, or just if we need them or not?
Yeah, I think, I think it's not going past do we need it or not, it's going, what's the best way to implement it? Tie it in with the branding. You know, Kim Lee Horn visited with us, and their initial thought was that we are divided into quadrants, and that it could very well be that quadrants is the finding of the studies, but maybe not. And what we want to do is, we want to figure out, how do we best break down our town in maps, signs, and also digital aspects, so that everything works together? And that you can find, you know, like for example, the blue line in Charlotte. You know that when you're on the, on the light rail, you're coming to the blue, you're coming to the blue area of Charlotte. Why? Because you're in the blue quadrant of Charlotte. And make, everything makes sense when you think about it, and that's something that we need as a town, is to not, not wait for it to happen to us and actually plan for it.
This is something I've been asking for, for years, so I'm 100% on board. Just want to be sure that we're implementing it and spending our funds correctly.
And I think it's also important, the Fort Mill Economic Council is also contributing to this study, and that we're, we're behind it, we're implementing it, but we really need the town's support to make sure that it happens.
I do believe that it's important, I'm sorry, Trudy, that it is recognized, exactly what David has said, that the Economic Development Commission is providing funding and a lot of in-kind work to get this moving, and if nothing else, you deserve reward for tenacity, because this is an issue that has come before me many times in my 10, 11 years sitting at this bench. So, I too think with the current improvements in the desirability of downtown and in Fort Mill, from a traffic standpoint, it couldn't do anything but help. So, I'd love to get us to a position that we're in agreement on a brand strategy and how to go about doing that. Trudy, did you?
That was going to be my question, is if the Economic Council was helping with the funding of it.
We are. Absolutely.
That was my question.
I think it's interesting, because we, we hear a lot of conversation about traffic and rooftops. You know, our businesses are the spine of our particular community, and to do the things that have been done in the last several years to make downtown an exciting place to visit, a destination, we owe a lot to the folks that have taken that and invested their time and money to make that happen in a way that it has. So, I'm grateful. I do not believe that we're in a position to make a vote on this tonight, but as we're looking at our budget, because this is on the presentation side and we have all these rules, we will certainly take it up as a part of our budget discussion, and we have some deadlines we have to hit with that, so we can certainly provide a response to you pretty quickly.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, and thank all of you for the effort and the continued support. Okay, we're going to throw one in here. Office Cole is with the Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitor Bureau, and I've seen him present before, and he's a lot of fun to watch, so let's have it.
Okay, alright. Well, this is, first of all, thank you, Mayor Savage and council members for having me written in to the agenda tonight.
Absolutely.
First of all, I'm excited. That right there, that project, working in tourism and working for a convention and visitors bureau, it's, it's vital to a community. Several years ago, when I arrived here in the county, York County, implemented this wayfinding sign, and very similar charges as far as the implementation of it, very similar charges. And I know they partnered with some things in Rock Hill, so with the symmetry in the county and all that, looked right. Everybody has different color variables and stuff like that as far as branding, but it's a great idea. Looking forward to seeing some of that signage come to the area, because as a tourist and as a visitor, and I travel, it makes a huge difference in knowing where to go and where not to go, if you know what I mean. I'll be in New Orleans next month, so pray for me.
True.
So, again, I'm Office Cole. I'm the interim executive director for the Rock Hill York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, so it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. This is just a simple presentation from an annual standpoint that you'll be seeing from us on an annual basis, largely in the summer months, to letting you know what our fiscal year would look like, where we're going, and, you know, how we can further partner with each other going forward.
Okay.
Our mission is very simple, always. We want to promote a thriving tourism economy for the entire county of York. And the vision is pretty cool, actually. I said, we want every tourism experience to be so thrilling, so exciting, you just got to tell somebody. And that's what it's about, our offices are.
Come now, Office, I just read recently that there are no thrills in Fort Mill.
Well, see, so you guys call it Fort Mill, but I'm going to call it Fort Thrill.
Or Thrill.
You know, I'm just, you know, such a play on words, though. But I don't believe that, none of us do, trust me. The traffic tells us this, it's definitely, it's definitely active. Our offices are located in the Baxter Hoot Center, or the Hoot Center now, on the campus of York Technical College, and I will say, we are looking forward to a new location, and who knows, Fort Mill can be our new home, and that'll be a great, another great partnership for, you know, for the Town of Fort Mill, I believe, as well, so.
Did you want the visitors.com website?
No.
Okay, I'll get to next time.
And what we're going to do is, I'm going to show you a couple of videos after the staff, on the Tourism Summit video, as far as our annual report, and on our recruiting video, which we show to prospective clients, we're trying to gain their business into the marketplace, whether it's a sports group, convention group, small meetings, military, religious groups, things of that nature. We try to showcase the area and what they can expect once they get here, but this is the lovely, powerful staff of six. Rebecca Arda, she's our finance manager, Sanja Burr, someone you may know, she's our media communications director, Allison Cleveland, she runs our front office, Mr. Andy Clinton, he, he's kind of operates as our group sales manager, Trina Rick, she's part-time for us on the weekends, and myself right there in the middle. And here's our first video, so if you click that picture, it should be hyperlinked.
Okay.
And that video, you know, if the town wanted to use it as, you know, part of the governmental page for someone to click on about, you know, the area, yes, it's not all Fort Mill, but at least it gives them the idea. You know, I always tell people, you know, a visitor or a tourist, when they come to an area, they don't really care about a town or a city line. We do, you know, from a territorial standpoint, but they just want to come into the area and just have a really good time, and whether the restaurant is on this side or this side, they just want to be safe and be able to tell how, how fun the experience was, you know, when they go back home, or if they're relocating here from, you know, Midwest, snowbirds, grandparents getting closer to their, you know, their grandchildren and things of that nature. Alright, so this next video is, we featured this in March, some of those, some of you have seen it, but it's our annual report on digital format.
Every day presents an opportunity to create your story in York County, South Carolina. What makes our community stand out is none other than its southern hospitality. You're more likely to meet people who came for a weekend and decided to stay a lifetime. Adventure is driven by your curiosity to explore and moments that will inspire you to seek new and exciting things to do in York County, South Carolina. It's our mission to create a thriving travel and tourism economy in York County. We want to make every tourism experience so exciting that it must be shared. Our shared growth is reflected in our overall direct economic impact highlights in York County for 2015 through 2016. Communications. Since launching our new brand message and identity in 2015, our communication efforts continue to evolve and advance to reflect today's new trends and current technology, which helped to boost communications and marketing outcomes. Sports tourism. The CVB sports staff recruited and assisted with over 32 sporting events held in the Rock Hill and York County area during the 2015 through 2016 fiscal year. These 32 events brought in an astounding 7.4 million economic impact to our local community. This generated a record high of over 15,000 hotel room nights for the year. Meetings and conferences. Our continued partnerships with local educational institutions, corporations, churches, and associations will increase our opportunity to host more conferences and meetings in York County. During the 2015 through 2016 fiscal year, the CVB recorded highs in economic impact, hotel room nights, and total attendance. Group tours. Our success in the group tour market this fiscal year was largely due to the amazing partnerships that the CVB has with local attractions. The CVB assisted 300 groups, 10,000 attendees, and brought in nearly half a million dollars in economic impact. Leisure travel. With the intense relocation growth of York County, the CVB began working on new initiatives, programs, and partnerships to advance their role in local economic development. Leisure travel produced over 70,000 room nights and brought in an estimated $5.5 million economic impact. We're different. We have something special, and we have something to share with those who get off the road most traveled and find a place full of history, heritage, outdoor recreation, nature, and so much more. Everyone has a story. Let us help create yours in York County.
And that's, that's, that was our notice edition. You have the physical version in front of you. There's a blue annual report there I put in front of you, also giving to you the Fort Mill attraction map, which we need, now need to change, because you guys have now moved your governmental offices at the Oak, so we'll go ahead and get that map updated. But those, those tear-off maps are pretty helpful. On the front end, you'll see the Fort Mill area, and then on the backside, it's just the entire county of York, so that goes off really well. In addition to that, you'll see those, one of those municipality sheets that directly talks about Fort Mill and what we brought to the area as far as from a specific event standpoint, which is right here. Gauging incoming in about a $2.3 million impact for the 16 fiscal year, which is a great year in Carolina. Alright, keep going. Ag and art tour was huge here. That's a, you know, I don't know if you all have participated or have gone to the Ag and Art Tour, but it's the largest free self-guided farm and agriculture and artisan tour in the country. It started here in York County. We started it. It now has 11 counties going all the way down to Ori County now. We're really excited about this. You guys have three sites in the area, and it's done really well. Sports is another growing thing. We hosted the FU National Championships at both high schools in December. 30 teams, it came from, see, that was about 10 different states, and that was a good time. It was cold, but it was a good time. So, I want to say Team Maryland won the eighth grade, Indiana won seventh grade, and sixth grade, I believe a team out of Georgia won that one. So, so that was another good event to bring here as well. The Rumble, which just happened, we were actually trying to move that entire tournament here, it was all in Charlotte. It's 150 basketball teams, 1,200-plus players, 15 states. I mean, you had the likes of LeBron James' son in town. It was a cool event, so both high schools, middle schools, we need basketball gyms. So, if you also want some, you know, to fund something else, you need a nice indoor, about 20 basketball courts, indoor basketball courts would be great. But, but sports is huge. The activities, we've pulled a lot of different things in the area. All the attractions, of course, you know, we've got to love Carolins and what it brings to the community. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I'm a seasoned, I'm a seasoned pass holder. I think the water park is what got me with two little ones in the area. When I can just go right to the water park entrance, and I don't have to walk four miles from the entrance to the water park, you know, it makes a big difference. You know, my, my kids go to Fort Mill schools, by the way, too, so I just want to throw that in there, by the way. Keep going. Of course, festivals, and, you know, you've got the states, you've got one of the state's best in the strawberry festival, and that's been pretty huge. And I know Brown, I think Brown's left already, but, you know, just the whole, the whole town staff, and I know he does a lot with, with not as many people in his office, and I want to salute to Brown, because we've partnered with Brown quite a bit, and we use Banks Gym as well for basketball events as well, so that's also nice to do. Social media, and I'll be, I'll wrap it up here. Social media, and I'll wrap it up here quickly. Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, we're all over. It's all about my Y C story with the hashtag. We want folks to experience all that stuff. We do contests, and we do so many different things that I honestly don't know what they are, but the communications teams and media teams and our interns, they have fun with it, and I trust them. I might just say, don't post anything that'll get you fired. All right?
What was that hashtag?
Don't post anything to get you fired, you know. All right, marketing, and this is pretty much the end of it. We really market three ways. The Visitors Guide, a lot of folks in this room have seen this Visitors Guide, we are really excited about this piece. This is pretty much the be-all, go-all book for somebody in town wanting to know what's going on, things to do. This is our new one. I already know all seven of you have downloaded already. I won't check your phones, but I know you already have the Visit York County app, because it's free. It's an eat, stay, and play app. The cool thing is, even someone who lives here locally, it is kinda cool to know if I wanna find a new restaurant, or a new activity, or calendar of events, I can plug something in, GPS it, and it'll get me there. This thing has went off really well, so if you guys get a chance, if you haven't downloaded and you have family in town, it is a pretty cool app, and it's the Visit York County app. It's on the Android and the iPhone device. Of course, our website, visityorkcounty.com, where all the towns and the cities and the municipalities alike can submit their events, and, I mean, I know we're Carolina, we're Carolina a lot, so we have all the events here, pretty much online, all ready for you guys. All right? Before I get to this last thing, I wanna say something. Last week, we had twenty international golf writers in town. Germany, England, Australia, Austria, you know, parts of the UK, Paris, France, they were in town for the PGAs, and we did a partnership with South Carolina PRT. So what we did was, we put them up in a hotel, we had a big dinner with them at the Pump House, and we played Springfield at Friday morning. You know, I wanted, I wanted a man to play, Dennis, but you know, you guys got him working so hard, he couldn't get out Friday morning. But I wanted to let you know that those are the types of things that we're doing to promote the area. Those writers, the hope, the goal of it is, when they see our area, our restaurants, our golf courses, the accessibility of everything, and affordability of everything, that we get stories published from that. It went off marvelous. I mean, it was marvelous. I know one of our associate superintendents, Dr. Tommy Smokey, he played as well. Joe Romnick played with him. You know, Joe doesn't have a really good game of golf, but he did play with him.
Thanks for telling me that.
But, but it was a good time, and it was good to see those types of people from an international thing in our area. So we're not just domestic, it's more than local, it's more than, you know, from a nationwide, you know. Fort Mill is international, and that story doesn't get told enough, and when you have a good product, which we do, it makes our job a little bit easier. Well, this is the newest thing, the newest creation. I'm gonna pass, start right here, and it is the New Relocation Guide, which we just launched, really, not even a month ago. We are getting people into our office every day, asking information about the area, and there was not one entity in the entire county that really wanted to take it on, probably because of the cost of a project like this. So this is our first version. We modeled this after Charleston, South Carolina's Visitor, well, not the Visitor's Guide, but the Relocation Guide. Fort Mill, I'm gonna say page twelve, I believe, and we're really excited, to be honest with you, we're already planning for the next one next year. We're already going two point oh version. We would love to get your feedback on it, you know, when you guys get, when you guys get a moment to take a look at everything. But the cool thing about it is, it's now one resource, education, transportation, all the municipalities. It's a one-stop-shop guide for what they need to know about when they're moving here. We're getting transports, transplants from all over the country to our area. Trust me, I see it in traffic every morning, dropping the kids off to school, and that's a good thing. I'm not, you know, I'm not complaining, it's all a part of life, and we're really excited. Here's another thing, we talked about digital, going digital with the app and everything, people want roadmaps. So we now have a roadmap for the county, and, well, please do yourself a favor, do not unfold it right now, because you would not, you'd have to get it back together. Okay, I'm, I'm, trust me, don't, don't do it, just look at it, trust me, everything is in there. But we have the town in here for ads and everything, you guys are in here, placing here strategically, and we have one side, the county, and the other side is all the municipalities identified, and this is going really well. We sell these for two dollars, and of course, the realtors love the Relocation Guide, and we sell those in bulk to them, because we'll get depleted, that we recoup some of our costs for the printing. But far as the individual coming in, the Relocation Guides are free to the public. We have the relocation specialists in our office, and our goal is to try to educate people and try to give them everything at once, whether it's a Visitors Guide, a Relocation Guide, whatever they need. We're just trying to be that one-source office. We're really about, we're really excited about where we're moving to, looking forward to a great 2017 and beyond, and looking forward to working with you all. I need to say this, thank you, thank you, thank you for the support you have given us from the accommodations tax and the hotel money. We are truly grateful for that. We just had an event, football event, even though it was in Rock Hill, we booked over twenty-five hundred room nights. We have, we pretty much have a Housing Bureau in-house now, we own it, it's pretty much like Orbitz. So we now can track all the rooms and where they're going, reporting-wise. So it's all about metrics and return on investment and where it's going. And I can now tell you, tell you all where the money is going, which hotels are popular, why, time of month, all that good stuff. So that, those are reporting metrics that we have now, and we're really excited to have in the office. And also, we get to keep that money in-house, because we have a lot of third-party companies coming into our marketplace, you know, charging exorbitant amounts of rebates. If you guys have kids and travel and all that stuff, you know, it can get expensive. But we now can maintain that control, and the hoteliers are something they wanted, and we're partnering with them. So I won't take up more than time, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm here, but I'm also available for any time after your meetings or this evening, for example.
Any questions for all of us?
I have one.
Sure.
Do you promote the Kings Mountain Battlefield?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We actually have a brochure for both Kings Mountain State and National Military Park.
And this information is in our publication kiosk at Town Hall, too, so.
Cool.
I was just gonna make one comment. Three of the six employees that are at the convention Visitors Bureau used to work for the Chamber, and I retired from the Chamber a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And so I know three of them.
Yeah, well, they, they talk about their days with Mr. Youngblood all the time, so...
I bet they do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's a, it's a good partnership, you know, and it's, it's kinda cool to have, you know, whether it's from the Chamber or even from the hotel side, we got a good cross-mix of experience in the office there, so.
Office, I'd like to thank you for your energy. Again, that you're, you're a pretty good presenter, and that you keep everybody engaged, and if that energy isn't anything else, it's a benefit to our county. So thank you so very much for what you do for us.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Alrighty, presentation number three, Financial Statements for the Month of July 2017. Shante Bowler.
Now, wait a minute, where y'all going?
Yeah. She listened to you.
I got a statement, Shante.
Wise man, Mr. Ray, wise man.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. My presentation may not be as full of energy as our previous presenter, but I do want to let you know where we stand financially. We are coming around the bend as we approach the end of our fiscal year, which is September thirty. We are ten months into the fiscal year, and our target, target is eighty-three percent. Our revenues continue to grow in all of our various funds and are either near or exceeding the eighty-three percent threshold. Our general fund revenues are exceeding our expenditures by three point eight million dollars. Our gross revenue fund expenditures are, up revenues are exceeding our expenditures by three point six million. Our stormwater revenues are exceeding expenditures by three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And in our capital projects fund, we always like you to know that hospitality tax revenue has now exceeded the budget by forty-six thousand dollars, so we're doing very well in that area. Concerning our other funds, our local accommodations balance is three hundred and thirty thousand. Our impact fee balances for fire protection is four hundred and forty-five thousand seventy-six dollars. Municipal facilities, two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred eighteen dollars. And for our recreation fund, one million six hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred and two dollars. I also wanted to just let you know that the budget process is continuing. As you all know, we will be coming together to have our first workshop with you all on this coming Saturday, and we'll have a lot of things to talk about. Yeah. And then wanted to give you just a little update on our software RFP. We're still doing our due diligence there and have scheduled a visit for this coming Thursday, a site visit, that we'll be going to see one of the vendor's software products in operation, so we hope to be bringing your recommendation for that soon. So this ends my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask.
Do you have any questions for Shante?
I will save until Saturday. How about that?
Until Saturday, okay.
Excellent work. Thank you so much, Shante.
You're welcome.
It's all good news. Old Business Items. Old Business Item Number One, First Reading. An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County Tax Map Number zero-two-zero-five-zero-four-zero-zero-nine, containing approximately point fifty-five plus or minus acres located at four-twenty-seven Bank Street from R-15 residential to LC Local Commercial. This is Ward Two, Mr. Helms. Staff recommends that we table this discussion. The Planning Commission recommendation deny with notes. Do I have a motion?
If a motion, we accept Old Business Item Number One.
Have a motion to accept.
Second.
And a second. Joe, would you like to talk to us about this?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you recall at your last meeting, you had a discussion about the American Legion property over on Bank Street, and at the time, you had a request to rezone the property from R-15 residential to LC Local Commercial, and both staff and the Planning Commission recommended denial of that rezoning for a number of reasons. The primary one of which was because the property was under two acres, and to rezone it would violate our own zoning ordinance. At the last meeting, council voted to defer the request and asked for us to meet onsite with the applicant, and the mayor and I had a chance to go out on, I think it was July twenty-eighth, and we wanted to discuss if there was an alternate that we could possibly pursue that would allow them to install their deck without having to rezone the property. We actually went out and measured some setbacks and walked the property, and we did find a solution that would allow them to build their deck, not in the original location, but on the side of the property where there's currently a parking space. So our recommendation, we do have on your agenda under New Business Number Two, would be a text amendment, which would be amending our zoning ordinance, our current zoning ordinance, to allow private and semi-private clubs, lodges, and union halls in the R-15, R-25 zoning district, which is what that property is zoned currently. The issue we ran into was, those uses are not currently allowed in that district, so they could not expand. If you amend the district, it would allow them to expand, as long as they meet all the setback requirements, without having to rezone the property. So our recommendation for this one would be to table the rezoning ordinance, and when you get to New Business Item Number Two, to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow those types of uses in the R-15, R-25 zoning districts.
Do you have any questions for Joe? Hearing none. We currently have a motion to accept the Old Business Item. Do we need to have a second motion?
You can have a substitute motion to table.
A substitute motion? I'll never use all the right terminology in one night.
Make a substitute motion to table Old Business Item Number One.
And...
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. New Business Item. New Business Item Number One, State Accommodations Advisory Committee Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2015-2016.
Mayor, I can take that one for you, if you like.
Okay. Do we need a motion to open it, to...
Not yet. If you want me to just give you the recommendations of the committee, it is on your iPads also, but the State Accommodations Advisory Committee did meet, there were four applicants. Two of the applicants, they recommended funding to you. One was the Fort Mill History Museum, an amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and the other was South Carolina Strawberry Festival, an amount of twelve thousand sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, and that is for FY15-16 monies. This is the first year that the State Advisory Committee actually had to meet. You just got to the threshold where you had to have an advisory committee and them, you know, make recommendations to you for funding. So we would need a motion to accept their recommendation.
Any questions before we have a motion?
So the committee decided to, we get one, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if we had had monies, would we have approved more than two, or was that the limitation?
I, I think, I think in this case, in this round, the, the other two applicants, they, they had vetted very thoroughly, I don't think they would have received funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept New Business Item Number One.
Have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. We have unanimous decision. Thank you. New Business Item Number Two, First Reading. An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article Two. Requirements by District, Section One, R-25 and R-15, one-family residential districts, so as to add private or semi-private clubs, lodges, and union halls as conditional use within the R-25 and R-15 districts. Staff recommendation is to approve. Planning Commission recommendation is pending. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the New Business Item Number Two.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have multiple seconds, that's a good thing. Do we have any discussion that's needed on this particular item? Joe?
This is the second ordinance I was just speaking about a moment ago. As I said, the purpose of this one is to amend R-15 and R-25 districts to allow private, semi-private clubs, lodges, and union halls. One of the things we looked at is, if you allow them in those districts, then any property that was owned, R-15 and R-25 could, in theory, have a club, lodge, and union hall. So what we've actually recommended is putting those in as a conditional use. The conditions, as they're drafted in the ordinance, would be, number one, the lot would have to have at least twenty thousand square feet. Number two, the lot would have to be either fronting two public rights-of-way, or if running one public right-of-way, have at least two hundred and fifty linear feet. And the third condition would be, it could not border or share a property line with a single-family residence. What we were trying to avoid is, somebody could go into, say, Whiteville Park, or the forest, or any R-15-zoned area, and if they were just allowed by right, they could put a club or union hall in the middle of a neighborhood. So we felt that these conditions would restrict it to a very limited number of locations where they could legally operate.
And that is part of the reading?
Sorry?
The conditions are part of the reading, yes.
And how will this change with the UDO? Would it be allowed in the UDO once it's accepted, the way it's currently written?
It would have to be included as an amendment. I don't think they're in there right now, but if you approve the language with this text amendment, we would just carry that over word for word in the new UDO.
Further questions?
Where does, so you build a neighborhood and you put a clubhouse with a pool, does this fall under that same jurisdiction?
No, those are more neighborhood amenities, so we have other, other language elsewhere in our code. You can have, they're still private, but, you know, a pool house, or even recreation fields and gazebos, playgrounds, those are all permitted as neighborhood amenities. Okay.
So what I've heard is, there's enough restriction in it to ensure that we aren't having Jimmy's little playhouse out back become a club?
In our opinion, yes.
Okay.
Is there any kind of need, I mean, kinda piggybacking on what you just said, is there any need to have language in there that limits the minimum size of the facility?
You could, if you wanted to. We, we didn't put that in there. If you were gonna have it, I wouldn't limit or require a minimum size. Typically, a conditional use might limit the maximum size.
Make sure that goes in the UDO.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's where the changes might, okay.
This has not gone before the planning yet, has it?
No, the Planning Commission actually... No, the Planning Commission actually meets tomorrow. So it'll be on their agenda. They just have to review it and give you a recommendation before you give final reading, which would be scheduled for your September meeting.
September meeting.
Yes. So this is first reading?
This is first. Yep.
Further questions?
Personally, glad Ray was able to work something out.
I am too.
Me too. All right. Hearing no further comments or discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous. All right. New Business Item Number Three, First Reading. An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Two. Administration. Article Four. Finance and Taxation. Division Four. Development Impact Fees. Section Two-Dash-306. Application and Exemptions, so as to add elementary, middle, and secondary schools and volunteer fire departments to the list of development activities which are exempt from development impact fees. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept New Business Item Number Three.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All righty. Our staff recommendation is to approve. Do we have any needed discussion on this particular item?
I'm a little confused as to when we voted in impact fee, we, I was under the impression we could not exempt people, as in turn, it would open us up for a lawsuit.
You can exempt only what you're allowed to exempt under state law. At the time, you were not allowed to exempt schools and volunteer fire stations. Actually, Ray Felder, our state representative, had a bill introduced, which was passed during the 2016 legislative year, which amended the allowable exemptions to include schools and volunteer fire departments. So this amendment is just amending our exemptions to add those two new ones to make it consistent with state law.
Okay. How about our fire department?
The, the law, and I put that in my staff write-up, it's kind of an interesting point, that when the law was passed, it only exempts volunteer fire departments. So the way I would read the law, I don't know, Barry, I don't know if he's looked at it yet, but a full-time paid fire station is not a volunteer fire station. So in our opinion, we believe that we would have to budget for and pay an impact fee to ourself. But if a volunteer fire station came in under the state law, as it's, as it currently stands, they would be exempt from impact fees.
We need to ask for an amendment to that.
Need to what?
Need to ask for an amendment to be written at the state level for that. If they're going to exempt schools and volunteer fire departments, then that needs to be in there.
Any further questions?
So do we have to, then, is this be an attachment to our existing impact fee language, or?
You're, you're just amending the existing ordinance.
I mean, do we have it all, like, on paper and put it in with the file, so everybody has it? And it's, okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it'd be official.
And even though technically, they are not exempt under our current ordinance, for the last several years, there was a proviso in the state budget that, even though they weren't included in the state law, that local governments were prohibited from charging impact fees for schools and fire departments, volunteer fire departments. And if we did, the state would withhold the equivalent amount in our local government fund distribution. So it hasn't been in the law until just the last year, but there have been provisos going back several years. So we, we have not charged, for example, the new high school going up on, on the southern bypass, we didn't charge an impact fee for that because of the budget proviso that year.
All right.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the table to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Information and Discussion. Information Discussion Item Number One, 2017-2018, Projected Streets for the York County Sea Fund Project, Davy Broom. Hi there.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Each, each year about this time, the York County Engineering Department asks that the town submit a list of streets for their York County Sea Fund Project. So I'm here tonight to discuss that. Before I go into the, the proposed streets, I would like to kind of give a update on the last two years. There were some streets, as you may have noticed, that were completed just this summer. I believe they were off of the 2015-16 list. Sprat Street, a portion of Sprat Street, yeah. Bank Street, a mile of that stretch of road was completed, and it's, if you've been on it, this is really good upgrade. And also Oak Street, one portion of it. The streets that we presented last year that were approved, that will probably be resurfaced next spring or summer, is Greer Street, Confederate Street, from Monroe White to Bank Street, and Forest Street, all of it, and AO Johns Boulevard, there was a sidewalk project that was included in, in this year's approved streets. So that's a pretty good list, all in all. I had, I think you have a list of what staff is recommending for this year. And to begin with, we, we believe that North White Street should be at the top of the list. And if you've driven in from, from Highway 21 into town, along about Horse Road, all the way to McCammon Street, very bumpy. We have submitted a project there, length of 2,640 feet. Also Steel Street, from Ralph Bunt Street all the way to Springfield Parkway, it's in disrepair also. Marshall Street has significant alligator cracking, the entire length of it.
It has what on it now?
Alligator.
Alligator cracking, which means the road is, the road itself is compromised, it's cracked. If you drive it, it's, it actually has portions of the road that's actually coming up. And then again, we had two holdovers from last year, a small section on South White Street, and the small section there on Claiborne Street, near Main Street. You know, we, we've asked the, the state to address those issues, and, and they have somewhat. But overall, I think it needs a, a much better repair. I would, I'm asking this year to, to submit two sidewalk projects in the list. North White Street, if you've, I thought back, I don't know if it was ten, ten, ten the last 15 years. Actually, the last time the White Street portion was on a Sea Fund project, Sidewalk and Curbin Gutter was in with that project. It was not, it wasn't constructed to where it's, it's, there's some failures in that stretch of Curbin Gutter, and it's more of an eyesore than, than anything. So I'm, I believe we need to submit that along with the stretch of road for that to be repaired. Claiborne Street also, if you go to Main Street, you make the turn off of Main Street onto Claiborne, on the sidewalk. Sidewalk goes from, a transition from a nice sidewalk to a really old, old sidewalk. And Claiborne Street is a state-owned road, and there for about 350 feet. It's major cracks, broken concrete. It needs to be addressed. And if you're looking at adding walking traffic to downtown, I think that needs to be addressed. It's pretty important. So, yes.
Can I interject? I did look at that one, that's one Ms. McCarley mentioned in the past. And also, on the other side, from the veterinarian to where the Kimbrel's is, that driveway there, it's in real bad shape. That's all broke up. But I think that whole little stretch along Claiborne there, both sides, needs to be redone.
And we can, again, these are, these are a list of streets and sidewalks that are proposed, and I have to turn this paperwork in tomorrow, so we can add, we can add that section to it.
However many feet that is.
Yeah, we can do that pretty quick.
You'll see where it's all about, yeah.
And the next slide, I think you've got some of the, the streets there, where we start and end and begin, and that's the North White Street. You can see the Horse Road, and it goes down to McCammon and Claiborne. And you can just go through these photos pretty quick, Caroline. Steel Street, that's a little over, I think that's 1.1 mile stretch. Marshall Street, one end to the other. And again, this is a smaller portion along South White Street there at the intersection of Sprat. That's the portion there on Claiborne Street that everyone's aware of. It's, it is, it's terrible. And then this is a sidewalk project, basically from, stretching from Sidney Johnson to Arger Street, is what we would like to be repaired.
Yeah, it is in kind of bad shape.
It is. And again, we can extend the Claiborne Street sidewalk project to cross over Main and go, we'll go, we'll walk in that direction, and I'll get some measurements for that. Project by priority, if, if I had to submit one tonight, just on my opinion, I believe, North White Street, the resurfacing would be number one. And then the sidewalk and Curbin Gutter would go hand-in-hand with that. And then the resurfacing of Steel Street, and Marshall Street, and then Claiborne Street sidewalk, and then Claiborne Street itself, and then South White. Now again, that's just my proposal. We can swap those around. Feel free to, to give any suggestions.
I will say the sidewalk on North White Street, from the foot of Main up, all the way up to Founders, is this much of a concern to me, because I've begun to walk from Millstone Park to the Peach Stand. I've got my mileage down. And that sidewalk is in the street. I mean, it is literally in the street. It's a little frightening, if you're not hugging over on the side of the grass. I, I think we have to, long-term, not tonight, but I think we have to take a look. We talk a lot about adding sidewalks. I think we have to look at the safety aspects of having, you know, the road system that we have and sidewalks that we're actually directing people to get on. It, it's just a little unnerving, you know, to have cars that close to you when you're walking, just a little.
And Davy, on the sidewalks that we're patching, I understand you're going to try to match up, but if we're building a new one, which I think you said the Sidney Johnson one was a new sidewalk, correct?
Actually...
Are we doing wider sidewalks when we have the opportunity?
Yeah, wider sidewalks, we have the opportunity. White Street has stayed on again.
Okay.
So they would be rebuilding the sidewalk and the Curbin Gutter. I would imagine, I think the Curbin Gutter is probably the most, is in worse shape than the sidewalk itself, but they may replace some panels of the sidewalk, but Curbin Gutter's the worst.
I had some, a call not too long after I got on council about Close Street. I guess it would be the west end of Close Street, and it is pretty bad on that side.
We can, we can add that also.
Or at least check it out.
Now, I also had a constituent just recently ask about Skipper, so I haven't had the chance to run it through there, and certainly not for this, but if you'll take a look at it and just see what opportunities for improvements are.
We will.
And Cadbury Street, the pavement is sleet, looks like trucks stopping, just bunch of stuff in the spots.
Yeah, we're going to report that to the state, see if they can address that.
I appreciate all the effort that you put into this. It's a moving target, to say the least. So thank you so much. I, do you need a vote on us approving your priority? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make the motion to approve the priority that Davy has recommended to us.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion or question? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All righty then. The Committee Report Number One, Report of the Ad hoc Appointments Committee. We do have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. I know that the committee has been unable to schedule a meeting, so we're going to not do anything with that one tonight. We will schedule that as soon as possible. Executive Session. Please note, council may take an action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. The executive session items are, number one, discussion of contractual matters pertaining to the Fort Mill School District. Item number two, discussion of items incidental to proposed contractual arrangements, Kimball Crossing subdivision. Item number three, receipt of legal advice, street acceptance policy. And item number four, receipt of legal advice pertaining to the Rutledge mixed-use development. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
We'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so very much. We will move into executive session.
All right, if I could have a motion to return to regular session?
Make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken or in our executive session, and no action items coming out of executive session. So with that, Larry, what you got for the good or the whole?
Well, this day in 1961, the Berlin Wall was completed. In 1906, Fidel Castro was born. In 1899, Alfred Hitchcock was born. In 1995, Mickey Mantle died. And in 1940, German aircraft started bombing southern Britain, therefore starting the Battle of Britain, which lasted until October 31st of that year. And the last thing, I took my youngest grandson to Kings Mountain Military Park. If you haven't been there, you really, you really need to go there. Very, very nice, and it's very well-presented.
Excellent.
It was a very important battle.
That's wonderful. Jamie?
I'm good.
Lisa?
So I had the pleasure last week of spending a little bit of time with Ron and Jane Edwards. And I think a couple of things that it brought to light is, number one, how many citizens we do have that are watching these videos on a regular basis and trying to stay informed, and certainly appreciate the feedback that we get from everybody who is watching and keeping an eye on. The other part is, it reminds me of how much they do for us. I mean, the fact that we have local produce, we can almost walk to and get on a regular basis, certainly on a daily basis. So thank you, Ron and Jane, appreciate what you guys do for our community, both the volunteer work and your full-time jobs. So thank you.
Is that it?
All right. Trudy?
I'm good.
Chris?
School starts Thursday.
Travis is going to increase just a little bit, so. No, it's just a pleasure to serve with all you guys. I was talking to Mr. Hunt the other day about all, I said, I really would have missed out on meeting a lot of great people if I never would have been sitting here. But it is good, just the town staff and all the hard work and hours you guys put in. I know, well, weekends and some budget workshops, and, and just all you guys do for us. Thank you all, and pleasure serving with everybody on this side, too.
All righty. Ron?
I was at Music in the Park Saturday night. Great crowd, good music, good weather for a change. And it was very, very enjoyable. And Dennis, thank you for, Virginia, for all the work y'all do, all the hard work putting everything together.
All righty. I have a couple of things. I think we need to make note that we have elections coming up in the fall. Anyone is filing for those seats, please do so expeditiously. And for everyone that's watching the videos, and I do think it's important, I watched one recently, because my mom kept asking me who somebody was in the audience, and I had to look at it to tell her who it was. And nobody ever likes themselves on video, so I had a lot of critiquing I didn't like. You might note, I tried not to drink as much water tonight. I did ask that we take a look at some of the lots in town that have high grass, because school does go back in on Thursday. And at Dobie's Bridge, some of the weeds, I know it's the county, but they're high enough that you can't see coming out of Nims Lake Road clearly. And I do not want us to have accidents that we can avoid. So if everyone that has property in the town... So if everyone that has property in the town, or in the township, and you realize that the weeds, you know, even if it's not property you live on, please maintain it, please clean it up, so that those of us that are out trying to get to work and trying to get to school will be able to have a clear and safe way to enter the highway. Main Street, I would ask that everyone watching this video, remember that Main Street is a vibrant Main Street now. Please slow down when you travel on Main Street. I try my best to spend money locally, and to support the businesses that are working to give us a good community location for everybody to meet. It's really difficult when you see people just flying down Main Street. Please slow down. It, it's a danger, and it's nobody's fault but the person behind the wheel, so slow down. To that matter, I also see a lot of litter these days, I don't know why. There for a while, I didn't see hardly any. But to the person that travels up Nims Lake Road and drinks a blue can of beer, please at least throw it closer to the street, so I can pick it up in the morning, I don't have to crawl in the poison ivy to get to it. So it's our town, it's not one person's town, it's our town. Met with the theater folks, the community playhouse, they're looking at a capital campaign to raise funding to find a permanent home. These folks put a lot of effort, back in 1979, Bob Reed, who was over the Leroy Springs at the time, suggested that we have a playhouse. That took root, we had big circus tents with plays that were sold out four, five days in a row. Then they moved it to school theaters, and more recently, they've been on Main Street, and they're very limited in their ability to put those plays on, and do the types of art shows and things that they would like to do, theater camps for the kids. So if you are in touch with anyone as a part of that really nice group of people, you know, consider the fact that they bring art and fun to our community, and they need your support. Was pleased with the Economic Development Commission on the Wayfinder signs, and I give a shout-out to the folks on Main Street, the downtown merchants, the crawl was a lot of fun, highly successful. I understand that they're looking at doing another one in the fall. So lastly, Mr. Cost, that wrote the article that said, "If you're looking for thrills, don't come to Fort Mill." Well, I agree with you, because we're not an amusement park. We're a community made up of caring individuals that want a sense of community, that go to ballfields to see each other's kids play, that enjoy each other's company. We have many, many activities in Fort Mill that are wonderful, that are based on connectedness. We're, we're not a big amusement park. So thank you for pointing that out. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Good evening.